Can I, can you use your microphone?
Oh, I thought I did. I'm sorry.
Don't worry. Do you have, I just want to do one more test with you. Can we, uh, can you just say something?
Are you talking to me?
I am Commissioner Fisher and I gotcha. Thank you. Could everyone that hasn't, please just check in.
Commissioner Morgan, Eric Causler's here too.
Oh, there you are Eric, I see ya, thanks.
This is Julia Crane, can you hear me?
I hear you Julie.
Okay good, cool, thanks guys.
Hi Bobo. You guys hear me?
Who is me?
Josh O'Neil.
We got you Josh.
Check him in. Hope my head looks good.
Alright, uh, could everybody please check in? How we looking? Okay, hey, do we have?
Ready to start John?
Oh, Mr. Chief Executive?
Okay, I'm gonna call the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Regular Meeting for Wednesday, May 20th, 2020 to order. We have roll call please.
I believe we have eleven present and one absent. Commissioner Anderson is absent.
Let the record show that Commissioner Anderson is excused. Commissioner Morgan, would you lead us in the prayer?
You bet. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens.
Thank you. Now we have the approval of the minutes of the May 6th 20 regular meeting. And, uh, let's go with the minutes of the May 6th meeting. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the May 6th 20 regular meeting minutes. You will also know that the May 6th, and I guess they're both from May 6th, are the letters that we read into the record as well, so I would make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the May 6th 20 regular meeting. And, uh, with the letters being included in those minutes. Anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone who wish to change their vote? The clerk report the vote?
Stand by. Mr. Chief Executive, looks like eleven a, zero n.
Motion carries. I do not believe we have any items not addressed on the agenda this evening. Under the Chief Executive's report, as everyone knows, the Governor announced, uh, on June 1st, we will move into Phase 2 of the reopening plans. So on June 1st, we are planning on opening the courthouse to the general public. And, uh, as far as the Stoughton Park Ridgewater Pool goes, we'll probably, we're weather dependent of course, but we're looking for around the June 11th opening date. We have to hire all the lifeguards and get them on board and everything, so it'll probably be around June 11th before the opening of that pool. We'll run three shifts during the, uh, day for the pool. The first one will be nine to 11 for open swim. And then we'll have, it'll be eight to 10 for open swim. And then everyone cleans out of the pool. And then there will be another session from, get my note here. From 12 to 3, there will be a session and then we'll clear out the pool and it'll be cleaned and sanitized, all the surrounding, the tables and chairs. Then there'll be another session in the evening from 4 to 7. So I think that's gonna work out pretty good and we'll be able to get everybody off the streets and in the water. And their season pass is still available and they're, um, being sold at the Golf Course Clubhouse right now. And, um, we're still accepting applications for lifeguards and, uh, concession workers at the pool, so if anyone knows any, uh, younger people or older people looking for work, uh, please have them fill out an application. That's all I have on the report tonight. We'll skip the report on Superfund because of the CDs being acted upon a little bit later. So now is the time for public comment on any items on the agenda. So this includes the entire agenda, including to be read and acted upon, the CDs. So turn it over to Commissioner Morgan to go to the phones and see if we have any public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'm just gonna hold off for a few seconds, just in case there's any delay, um, here, so I will, uh, I will go forward here in a second.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting tonight. Please state your name and address for the record.
John W. Ray, 915 West Galena Street here in Butte. Yes, I'm calling, uh, in reference to the item on the agenda regarding the consent decree. And please permit, and I'll try to keep this brief, make just a few concluding remarks in support of the consent decree. First, there now seems to be general agreement that the consent decree is a good thing for Butte. Uh, for example, some recent statements by Restore Our Creek have indicated that they thought the consent decree should pass. The decree provides for aggressive cleanup and removal, is a comprehensive approach to stormwater cleanup, there is significant waste removal, groundwater is aggressively remediated, and on and on. Second, the agreement provides for far more than EPA could order under Superfund, such as parks, trails, green spaces, water features, and very importantly, the expansion of the Residential Metals Abatement Program virtually all of Butte. As I've said before, this is a nationally recognized program, is an outstanding success, and it is a model for the nation, and now this will be expanded to all of Butte. Third, the current consent decree provides for a level of cleanup that is unprecedented in terms of other Superfund cleanup sites in the country. I've done this, and if you were to compare, uh, the cleanup that's articulated in the consent decree, uh, you would see that it goes far beyond what EPA has provided in other regions for the cleanup of historic mining sites. Fourth, the alternatives to the consent decree are very distressing. Either we go back to the negotiating table, exert another few years of negotiations, and end up with less than we have now. Or EPA, in order to meet the delisting timeline, issues a unilateral administrative order that gives a bare bones cleanup, absent many of the attractive features in the current consent decree. Fifth, EPA has no authority to order Atlantic Rich Field to provide for a restored Silver Bow Creek. To hold the consent decree up or hostage to such an expectation is to man, to demand that which legally cannot be done. Sixth, consent decree makes restored creek more likely, in that it provides for preparatory work that would be necessary for a restored creek to become a reality. Uh, also number seven, in terms of, and this issue has arisen recently, um, that there's been some criticism, well, why doesn't the consent decree address issues that are related to active mining in Butte? And the response to that is pretty simple. Superfund deals not with active mining, but with past mining activity in Butte. Um, in a statement, in a declaration by EPA back in 2001, commensurate with Superfund law, the regulation and permitting of active mining in Butte was turned over to the Hard Rock Bureau of the Montana Department of Environment, uh, of Environmental Quality, and they have responsibility for issues that are related, including air quality, for issues that are related to active mining. When active mining ceases in Butte, cleanup of the active mine site in Butte will be the responsibility of the Hard Rock Bureau in DEQ. And so EPA's Superfund has no statutory authority to regulate active mining. Uh, eight, closing this chapter of Superfund in Butte will remove a significant drag on Butte's economy and provide for more jobs that will be created implementing the terms of the decree. Ninth, even given the constraints of the current health crisis, there's been abundant opportunities for significant and meaningful public input into council's decision. There is extensive public support for the consent decree. And finally, tenth, there will be significant opportunities for additional public comment and input after the consent decree is sent to the federal court. There'll be a 30-day comment period. And after the decree is approved, there will be significant opportunities for public input in designing the implementation phase of the decree. So in short, I would argue that if the benefits and cost are weighed, the benefits of this consent decree far outweigh the negative. It's time, I would argue, to close this chapter of Superfund in Butte. It's time to move on. It's time for the Council of Commissioners to approve the consent decree. The risk of delay far outweigh the benefits to be gained now by prompt approval of the consent decree. And one other quick point, I do want to thank all members of the Council Commissioners and the staff of Butte Silver Bow, uh, that have been dealing with this Superfund issue. Uh, all of you on the council have devoted significant time, effort, attention, certainly have accomplished due diligence on this issue in collecting information, weighing this information, and deliberating. And I, as a citizen, uh, would like to thank all of you, uh, for your tremendous effort in that regard. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Joe Griffin. I live at 1121 West Diamond. Can you hear me alright John?
Yes, Joe, we have you. Thank you.
Okay. Um, my comment regards your vote this evening on the consent decree. With your vote, whether it is up or down, the remedy for Butte will move forward. It should be clear to you by now that I believe Butte will be far richer if you approve the consent decree. I know this council is ready for this vote. I've seen most of you at numerous public forums and field tours. But now, for the briefest moment, I want you to hold both the past and the future in your mind's eye. Thirty-eight years ago, a still nascent Environmental Protection Agency was faced with the daunting task of cleaning up a hundred years of mining damage to the Upper Clark Fork Watershed and protecting the residents of Butte and Anaconda from mining and smelting contamination. As the maxim, "How do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time?", the EPA began with a pragmatic approach, breaking the project into manageable bites. The watershed from Butte to Missoula is divided into three Superfund sites and further subdivided into 22 operable units. Your decision tonight will move one of those operable units, Butte Priority Soils, towards its concluding chapter. But your decision is much larger than just Butte. As we look towards the future, we must consider the entire watershed and the role we now play in restoring the health of that watershed. Butte, Anaconda, Deer Lodge, Drummond, Missoula, we are all communities linked by the Clark Fork and her tributaries. And with your vote, you will be moving restoration of the entire watershed forward. As you move beyond this evening and look towards the future, I hope you will follow the story of this world-class environmental cleanup. Even after you leave this council, please stay engaged. Take a walk on the Greenway someday. Someday soon, you'll be able to walk from the Granite Mountain Memorial to the Warm Springs Pond. Attend public forums that Sea Tech will hold will continue to organize. Help out with the Clark Fork Watershed Education Program. They truly represent the future. Their mission is to engage the future stewards of Silver Bow Creek and the Clark Fork by getting mostly middle school kids out on that river. This is a milestone moment for us all, and it will echo through time and across the watershed. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Joe. We'll just wait a couple of seconds, just to make sure there's no further delay. Right now, we don't have anybody on the phone.
Mr. Chief Executive, uh, members of council, that, that looks like that was all the phone calls that we, we've received. I do have a few letters to read into the record, if that's okay at this time?
That's great. Thank you, John.
Um, the first letter is from Fritz Daly, 1901 Roosevelt Drive. Commissioners, as the elected representatives of Butte Silver Bow, it is imperative for you to receive quality, reliable information in order to make quality-informed decisions. That is especially true of legal advice from the county attorney concerning the upcoming consent decree. As I have written to you in the past, this decision is one of the most important decisions that will ever be made in the history of Butte, Montana, if not the very most important. The economic, environmental, and social future of our great community depends on the quality of that decision. I don't write this email slash letter to be critical of, of anyone. I write it as a lifelong Butte resident concerned about the future of my great community. I spent four years of my life and thousands of hours of research and dedication as a member of the Silver Bow Creek Headwaters Coalition involved in a lawsuit against the state of Montana. Throughout the process, I have learned a great deal about the legal process, and I have made a concerted effort to pass that knowledge along in the process, both positive and negative information. Simply put, as I wrote in my historical report for the Butte Archives at the request of Ellen Crane, I learned that the judicial, judicial system is very difficult legal process for any individual trying to do what is right, and it is in the best interest of the residents of the state. To put it bluntly, the legal system is not designed to help what I call the little guy. If it was not for attorneys like Jim Getz to represent folks like Sister Mary Jo, Ron, and I on a contingency basis, a suit like ours would be impossible. As Sister Mary Jo McDonald stated at the conclusion of the successful lawsuit, "Sometimes David does actually beat Goliath." In my view, while I personally do not know the county attorney, as a former seven-year-term Montana legislator, I have great respect for her and for the council. However, I believe much of the information in the recent press release by County Attorney Joyce and the letter to the council contains misguided information. I did not know, as I would suspect many of you did not know either, Ms. Joyce actually received legal advice from Ryan McLean, an attorney with the law firm of Franz and Driscoll in Helena, Montana, in order to write you the letter. Additionally, it is worth noting that this contested stretch of Silver Bow Creek did contain, or did not contain any free-flowing water at the time of the Superfund law was enacted 1980, nor at the time the BIPSU was established in 1991. Perhaps more significantly, this contested stretch of Silver Bow Creek has not had natural water flows since mining of the Berkeley Pit started in 1955. Open pit mining effectively cut off the headwater source of flow to Silver Bow Creek. Presently, there is no public support to terminate mining activities in Butte. Former District Judge Newman handled the case and it, and is one of the most well-respected judges in Butte and Montana's history. Judge Newman did not take this ca, or this case lightly. Because of his due diligence and extreme knowledge of Montana law and Montana Constitution, he was able to make the quality decision he did. Any quality attorney in the state of Montana would uphold and respect that decision, as every attorney knows, the devil is in the details. The reality is, the law is the law and the constitution is the constitution, as proven by Jim Getz and confirmed by Judge Newman. The most important point that needs to be made in this case is the fact that while the initial case dealt with the name of the creek, the state of Montana and not Silver Bow Creek Headwaters Coalition initiated the claim that Silver Bow Creek from Texas Avenue to Montana Street was not a creek, and thus protected as waters of the state of Montana in Article 4, Section 3 of the Montana Constitution that states, "All waters within the boundaries of the state or property of the state held in trust for the use of its people." At that point in the process, the state totally changed the initial lawsuit purpose. They then made the claim in their process to defeat us at any cost, that in fact, the creek from Texas Avenue to Montana Street was no longer a creek, because over the years, the creek had been changed and altered. Ripraped and thus was, was no longer a creek and in essence was not protected as waters of the state of Montana, as is the case in the Montana Constitution. This case has many similar characteristics to Mitchell-Sloo case and Stream Access in particular. Our attorney, as, as an attorney for the case, used many of the same Montana law issues in presenting our case. I, I do not write this letter as an insult to Eileen or question her credibility, but I think it is important for you to have accurate, quality information to make your decision. It is critical for you to know the history of Silver Bow Creek. Remember, those who for, forget the lessons of history are bound to repeat the mistakes of history. While, while I'm sure the county attorney is a competent attorney when it comes to her area of expertise, dealing with criminal and county matters, environmental law is a specialty area of law not familiar and practiced by most attorneys. Judge Newman spent countless hours reading and researching Montana law and the Montana Constitution before making his excellent, quality-informed decision. He was also, or he also received numerous briefs and held three hearings open to the public on the issue. Butte, Montana owes him a great deal of credit for his efforts and this quality decision. Obviously, the state did not appeal this, or his decision because the results in the Montana Supreme Court would have resulted in the same result. Not sure if any decisions have been made, or have ever been, overthrown by the court. First of all, to insinuate that the members of the Silver Bow Creek Headwaters Coalition are anti-mining and support terminating mining activ, activities in Butte is an insult for each of us and is absolutely false. We are strong supporters of Montana Resources Mine, and that support can be confirmed by Mark Thompson of Montana Resources if you so desire. As so indicated, that Silver Bow Creek has had, has not had any natural water flows since mining of the Berkeley Pit started in 1955. It is even hard to believe that anyone who's lived and grown up in Butte could make such a false and inaccurate statement. Here are the facts, following your bullet points. Silver Bow Creek from its confluence at Dixie Creek and Yankee Doodle Creek above the Yankee Doodle Tailings Pond, where it still exists, to Warm Spring Ponds is classified as a gaining stream, meaning a stream that receives water emerging, emerging from a submerged spring or other groundwater seepage, which adds to its overall flow. For you, information cutthroat will still survive in Silver Bow Creek above Yankee Doodle Tailings Pond. Second bullet, groundwater flowed to Silver Bow Creek and kept it as natural water flow until the French Drain was installed by the Atlantic Rich Field Company in 2003 through 2005. At that point, the Atlantic Rich Field Company, as written by the Trout Slayer on Facebook, "Atlantic Rich Field, AR, and EPA have taken our creek channel to move their dirty stormwater to their treatment ponds in the middle of our town." Now we can't use the channel for a creek because AR and EPA have taken it. How is EPA and AR allowed to take the channel from the public? Dixie Creek and Yankee Doodle Creek are not the only creeks that flowed to Silver Bow Creek. Horse Canyon Creeks that flowed from the Columbia Gardens entered Silver Bow Creek just west of the concentrator and flowed to the creek as a natural water flow, along Continental Avenue until sometime in the early 1990s. My great friend Al Beavis, a historic mine worker who worked for Montana Resources, has told me that at least six creeks flowed off the East Ridge to Silver Bow Creek. Uh, fourth bullet, and while yes, the Berkeley Pit did cut off the flow of the creek, that absolutely did not happen in 1955, as indicated by the county attorney, and it did flow as a natural water flow until sometime in the 1960s. I have also numerous photos that I have attached that you will find in interest of supporting my thoughts. With that information, and there absolutely is much more, including discovery, depositions, mediation, hearing information, et cetera, and numerous meetings and phone conversations between the parties, I would advise you as council members to, especially, or and especially the county attorney, to visit the Butte Archives to acquire the needed knowledge to make the important decision you are about to make. Jim Getz, the quality person that he has donated all the legal work for you to learn the truth about Silver Bow Creek and its history. I also donated all, all the material I acquired throughout the process, and it was also available at the archives. In closing, while I'm not an expert, I write this forum, or write this from my heart and recollected knowledge. This is my sole opinion as a former seven-term legislator who have been involved and fought for the Stream Access issue in numerous sessions. I worked against and have witnessed numerous attempts by many to change that extremely important decision. I believe strongly that if Butte Silver Bow, the EPA, the state are successful in their efforts to accept the inferior cleanup and restoration of Silver Bow Creek from Texas Avenue to Montana Street, using the fact that Silver Bow Creek from Texas Avenue is not a creek, their logic, information, and conclusion will be used extensively in the future to overturn Montana's Stream Access laws. Out of staters like Huey Lewis and Mr. Kennedy from the Ruby River will love this assessment and attempt once again to own the waters and deny Montana residents to access those waters. Please don't let that be your legacy. And that one was from Fritz Daly.
Commissioner Morgan, if I may?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chief Executive.
Let the record to show that Commissioner Anderson has joined, so we do have twelve commissioners now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. May I continue?
Yes, you may.
Okay. The next, uh, communication is from Frank Baroni. Um, to all, I have attached three maps from the Library of Congress showing Silver Bow Creek flowing through Meterville from, from the north. If you enlarge the picture Silver Bow Creek dash A, you can clearly read Silver Bow Creek name on the creek that flowed through Meterville from the north and see that it joined another creek around Texas Avenue in, in picture, Silver Bow Creek dash C. This is in-convertible proof that this Upper Silver Bow Creek existed even beyond Texas Avenue. These pictures also show that the Upper Silver Bow Creek was destroyed by open pit mining in the area as its location was where the pit is now. Here is the link to the Library of Congress maps where I got these. Updated earlier email, um, reply to Commissioner Dan Olson's email statement to me 15th of May, "That, as it has been said many times, there's never been a creek in that area. It was a wetlands due to the lack of gradient for the water to flow with the volume and intensity of the meandering creek. As it has been said many times, when I, when a lie is told over and over, that some people believe it is the truth. I grew up in Meterville at 11 Harrison Street and 11 Main Street, my grandmother and great-grandmother's house. I had to walk to Holy Savior School every day of my first four-" I had to walk to Holy Savior School every day of my first four grades. In doing so, I had to walk a bridge over Silver Bow Creek flowing through Meterville many times and sometimes waded through it to the dismay of my parents. We used to put nails in the water so that they could turn them copper. Its stream bed was at least ten feet wide and in some places several feet deep. The lagoons, ponds fed by the creek claimed the life of a young Meterville boy in the early fifties when he went swimming and won. My great-grandmother's home was next to the Alpine Bar at nine Main Street across from those ponds. There is a highway bridge south of Meterville over the creek and the railroad tracks. The bridge was part of the road from Butte to Helena and it was the continuation traveling east of Park Street in Uptown Butte. The Anaconda Company, the ACM Company, pumped mine water into Silver Bow Creek north of Meterville. Sometimes in the early fifties, the ACM Company built a precipitating plant to extract ninety-seven percent pure copper from the mine water pumped into the creek. The plant was located in north Meterville. In the nineteen fifties, my father had the contract to supply tin cans to the plant for precipitation process. I rode semi-trucks with him and helped him with unloading tin cans at the plant many times in my teens. There is no doubt the Silver Bow Creek was there, a rather full-running creek from north of Meterville running near the concentrator is now located. In nineteen fifty-five, the ACM began open pit mining sometime in the early sixties or early seventies, the creek was destroyed as the pit gobbled it up in Meterville. Watch the YouTube video at www.youtube.com/Meterville-MontanaLandscape1959-1961. First part of the video shows a precipitating plant fed by Silver Bow Creek and the copper sulfite in certain icicles that grew from the leaks in the side of the wooded bins that held the copper water from the creek while the iron cans were being dissolved. The other flow of the headwaters of Silver Bow Creek came from a couple of flows from the East Ridge through the Columbia Gardens. When the Gardens was built, the ACM Company built a wooden trough to direct the water through the Gardens area. The trough was, in my recollection, at least six feet deep and eight feet wide with a bridge crossing it at the upper pavilion so that people could cross over it. We used to aid in the water, which during the spring thaw was quite a significant flow. In high school, we used to cool our picnic watermelons in the creek along the side of the Upper Gardens Pavilion. Whoever says there was never a creek there is woefully mistaken. I lived there, saw it there, played in it, remember clearly that it was there, as do many other people who lived in the Meterville and Queen area and who live in Butte. I am opposed to this consent decree being signed without the Upper Silver Bow Creek, the section in question being included for restoration. The consent decree must include language that explicitly states that the restoration of Silver Bow, Upper Silver Bow Creek will be completed and paid for by Arco with the time being of the essence." And that one was from Frank Barone. Couple maps associated. Um, the next one is from Mary K. Craig. Um, there's two parts to this. "Hello Chairman Morgan and Council of Commissioners. Comments I submitted through the council online public comment page on May sixth were acknowledged by the email below, but were not read at the tonight's council meeting, nor at the meeting of May thirteenth. I'm aware as a member of the Restore Our Creek Coalition followed up with you around May seventh regarding unread comments, so we thought surely they would be included in your May thirteenth meeting, but they were not. Unable to stream that meeting, I did listen to the entire meeting recording on Sunday, May seventeenth, only to learn that they were, once again, not included, not read it into the public record. My public comments go beyond the issues discussed by many, or by any other commenters. As I've worked on the Butte Superfund twenty-nine years, I am a founder and advisor of Citizens for Labor and Environmental Justice, so perhaps most of you have not heard these concerns before. These are the issues I sent into the EPA and state NRD public comment periods over the past year, but I was told by the county Superfund Manager that comments sent to the negotiating parties were not passed along to the Butte-Silver Bow County Commissioners for your consideration. Perhaps you should be allowed to see what our public comments about Butte's cleanup before you sign off on the CD. This is not the first time that the comments from the folks concerned with human health have been lost." I, uh... Um, I'm just making sure you see mine, so please exercise your due diligence and consider each of the points I make in the letter below and in my attachment. Some very little, his reiteration of my stance as a part of the five-year-long voluntary advocacy work for getting to a restored Silver Bow Creek for future people of Butte. Most of the following relates to environmental justice for the low-income folks on the Butte Hill that are voiceless. Hey, challenge, I'll give five bucks to any one of you who can say you've already heard all my points I present to you below. Game on. The next is the email that she's referring to, Mary K. Craig, five eighteen West Granite Street. "Dear Commissioners, I am submitting two consent decree documents through this portal. This one relates to the Silver Bow Creek while the other covers the priority soils issue I raised in the ROD Amendment. Public comment period last July eleventh." It is submitted as an attachment here. Number one, Silver Bow Creek, my creek comments to yours in my guest editorial in our daily paper yesterday, to wit. April four, twenty twenty edition, the Montana Standard. Editor, the myopia of the few who deem the first mile of Silver Bow Creek impossible to restore rests in their desire for immediate gratification. In my twenty-nine years of work on Superfund issues in Butte, I've gained a strong desire to provide future people of Butte with the clean and healthy environment that our Montana Constitution says is an inalienable right. I am a founder of the nineteen ninety-five Citizens of Labor and Environmental Justice, CLEJ, and brought that group to the Restore Our Creek Coalition in twenty fifteen. That means my priorities are similar to those of our Council of Commissioners who will decide on the decree or the degree of the cleanup Butte receives in forever time. We all like to see environmental justice for Butte people, and that will bring economic and social justice with it when a clean, healthful Butte is returned to us. I grew up two blocks from the smelly, toxic laden water sands, bugs, burgs, and any life, yet ROCC looks forward to decades from now, post-mining, when clean water rushes down Dixie, Yankee Doodle, and all the streams that created Silver Bow Creek. ROCC is rooted in a vision of a future natural Silver Bow Creek, yet nothing in the consent decree recognizes substantially how this will be accomplished. So ROCC's vision prepares the way of the future creek based in scientific data from the top Montana Bureau of Mines and Geology Engineers who say the groundwater in the corridor will in turn step vital, eventually clean itself. The ROCC vision sees the worst contaminated tailings removed and allow interim recreational use of citizens of clean, flowing water through a temporary lined creek bed in a creek or a restored park-like setting. These components are Butte citizen's solutions to the lack of any specific commitment to a creek and promises made by the negotiating party to the consent decree. Without this interim lined creek bed, future people here will have nothing on which to trust the negotiating parties that Silver Bow Creek will ever be usable again, and that's why the need for an initially lined creek is so vital. Please ask our county commissioners be prepared for that day by insisting on a tangible promise now, an MOU outside the CD that is in the beginning of the clean water running from Texas Avenue to Blacktail Creek. Future Butte people in perpetuity will thank them for the legacy of justice their forethought today will bring. Mary K. Craig has worked for the Clark Fork Coalition in the past, Chair of the Board of both Citizens Technical Environmental Committee and the Regional American Lung Association, is a spokesperson for CLEJ and its representative to ROCC. Number two, key issues for priority soil comments, please make as part of your official comments, the attached letter I sent July eleventh, twenty nineteen into EPA's Priority Soils ROD Amendment public comment process, I was surprised to learn these types of comments were not passed along to all Butte-Silver Bow Council of Commissioners. Note that I specifically asked that low-income renters of substandard housing on the Butte Hill be finally allowed to request and receive testing for arsenic and lead in their attics and yards, just as homeowners have been able to do for over a decade. This is a potentially serious environmental justice issue and has been neglected for the past twenty-five years. Though addressed frequently with the EPA by me and others, there has been no residential metals cleanup for the poor renters living in the very old housing stock. I was a party to eighteen monthly meetings of the BSB Lead Levels Advisory Council in the early nineteen nineties. From that grew the nationally acclaimed Residential Metals Abatement Program, where yards and attics are tested by Butte-Silver Bow, and if lead or arsenic is higher than the already highest in the nation's standards, that EPA chose for Butte, the property is clean. My own dwelling was clean, but I am a homeowner, not a renter. Since nineteen seventy-two, the Montana Constitution has guaranteed all citizens a cleanup and healthy environment has an inalienable right, yet EPA has chosen that the ability to request metals cleanup is not open to any Butte renters. I have presented this disparity to EPA, State DEQ, and BSB ever since the R map was created. After Citizens for the Labor and Environmental Justice hosted twenty sixteen public meeting on this topic, EPA's Community Involvement Coordinator followed up with the assurance from EPA that they have the authority to do so. If necessary, force landowners to allow the inspection of yards and attics and cleanup were warranted. Today, the CD assures the public that this will happen, great news, but what is the difference between the assurances over the years and today's assurance in the CD? Nothing. People want to know that this will be accomplished. Will there be letters sent to folks in low-income housing offering the opportunity to request their homes to be tested and cleaned if too much toxicity? This information should be included in the work plan accompanying the CD, but it is not. So I ask you, the Commissioners of Butte-Silver Bow and agent of the state, to now insist an action plan is either put into the work plan for the CD or that a separate MOU outlining the steps and timeline for this R map function be signed by the negotiating parties. Twenty-five years is too many for a known human health deficiency and Superfund cleanup. Please make sure you see the timeline for cleanup that so equity of low-income housing renters is prioritized ahead of the newly announced expanded cleanup options for homeowner units outside the priority soils boundary. A logical and enforceable plan, please. B, the stormwater ponds are potentially dangerous in that the last first mile of the Silver Bow Creek, the CD shows plans for the stormwater ponds that will ebb and flow, depositing toxic metals between high and low water lines. Through pictures of attractive wrought iron fencing used elsewhere in the nation for stormwater, public safety were provided by ROCC to the parties. The option to prevent vulnerable children from playing at the stormwater beaches was, were denied in the consent decree. Warning signage was chosen instead of despite the fact little humans love to splash in the water and cannot read. EPA cites its assumptions of risk to hypothetical child from frequently these fun water features and concludes children are safe. No real data backs this up, not inside the consent decree nor elsewhere. I requested more information of EPA and was told I could find it on their website. Indeed, I searched it and did find the topic addressed. However, it again uses assumptions that are not logical without more input, such as figures on how much arsenic and lead will come through the corridor. I was told that it is not yet known, so how can the assumptions be valid? Will you Commissioners please be the last stopgap to assure low-income, vulnerable children living near the creek corridor not harmed by an attractive nuisance? No make that a poisonous attraction. Citizens, or C, Citizens for the Labor and Environmental Justice has continually decreed the outsized amount of lead that will be allowed in Butte residences and soils. The twelve hundred parts per million EPA wants Butte people to accept is not logical given the two hundred ppm for anaconda and his negligible amount allowed for most of all the others in the US. A similar situation exists for arsenic here. Somehow because pigs or mice seem to be able to endure a short-term study, Butte people shall be subjected to twelve hundred ppm of lead. A simple, clear question to ask is why other cities in the country do not have the twelve hundred ppm standard if it's so safe? If the EPA responsiveness summary had included all the comments submitted by interested citizens rather than arbitrarily consolidating them into short, general categories that then received general, nonspecific answers, your task would be much easier. Perhaps you could ask to access the previous public comments sent to the US EPA that so many citizens have submitted. Too many citizen concerns have simply been lumped into categories with dismissive answers instead of comprehensive, logical answers. I intend these and the attached, more detailed comments to be submitted with today to the federal judge who will rule on the advocacy of the Superfund Consent Decree. Again, that's because I was told by the public Superfund official that you have not yet been privy to all the matters of the public concerning the volunteer neighborhoods brought to the EPA. And that's the shame when in the final decision-makers, neither you nor the judge has been involved in Superfund meetings over the decades while responsible citizens have been. Why not consider all the worries of those who've spent years of their lives trying to get inadequate cleanup for Butte? I thank you very sincerely for your thoughtful attention to my mind, my own, and other citizens' concerns. After over a quarter-century Butte Priority Soils work, I hope you will take your time and not be pushed as you perform your due diligence towards decisions that will affect Butte business and people in perpetuity. It would be good if you could see your way to allow Butte people to learn what their neighbors have been concerned about so they might also find that they like to comment in kind with their own letters. If you have any questions about any of my statements, please contact me at seven two three three eight five one. And that again was from Mary K. Craig. The next comment is from Dr. John W. Ray. Uh, "There isn't anything really new to say regarding why I support the consent decree. In fact, there's been a full vetting of arguments for and against. So please permit me to make a few concluding remarks as public input. There now seems to be a general agreement that the consent decree is a good thing for Butte. The decree provides the aggressive cleanup and removal. There is a comprehensive approach to stormwater cleanup. There is a significant waste removal. Groundwater is aggressively remediated and so forth. The agreement provides far more than EPA could order in the Superfund, such as parks, trails, green spaces, water features, and very importantly, the expansion of the Residential Metals Abatement Program to virtually all of Butte. The current consent decree provides for a level of cleanup that is unprecedented in terms of other Superfund cleanup sites in the country. The, number four, the alternatives to the consent decree are very distressing. Either we go back to the negotiating table, exert another few years in negotiations, and end up with less than we have now, or EPA, in order to meet the delisting timeline, issues a unilateral administrative order that gives a bare-bones cleanup absent many attractive features in the current consent decree. Number five, EPA has no authority to order Atlantic Richfield to provide for a restored Silver Bow Creek. To hold the consent decree hostage to such an expectation is to demand that which legally cannot be." Number six, the consent decree makes a restored creek more likely in that it provides for perpetuity work, or preparatory work, excuse me, work that would be necessary for a restored creek to become a reality. Number seven, closing this chapter of Superfund in Butte will remove a significant drag on Butte's economy and provide for more jobs that will be created in implementing the terms of the decree. Number eight, even given the constraints of the current health crisis, there have been abundant opportunities for significant and meaningful public input into the council's decision. There is an extensive public support for the consent decree. Number nine, there will be a significant opportunity for additional public comment after the consent decree is sent to federal court and also after the decree is approved. In short, I would argue that if the benefits and costs are weighed, the benefits of this consent decree far outweigh the negative. It is time to close this chapter of Superfund in Butte. It's time to move on. It's time for the Council of Commissioners to approve the consent decree. The risks of delay far outweigh the benefits to be gained now by the prompt approval of the consent decree. The next one is from Stephen T. Kiava, Ph.D., P.E., eighteen fifty-two, Florida. "Nine million to fifteen million dollars to construct an irrigation ditch between the Civic Center and the KOA. An ethical use of scarce resources." That's a question mark. "I attended the meeting at Montana Tech on the fourteenth of January during which Water and Environmental Technologies presented their conceptual design for a meandering one-percent hydraulic gradient replacement for the open sewer that had a name other than Silver Bow Creek. Before the meeting, I had the misconception that the stream being considered would follow its original channel through shirt-tail flats. I have fond memories of that channel." I have fond memories of that channel. My father grew up next to its northern bank and the southernmost house on California Street. Figure eight and wet's design shows the ditch after crossing Harrison Avenue. Trends south, borders the Columbus Plaza, takes a right turn and then borders Schneider's and Baker's fences as it trends westerly. The design water flow rate for, for the irrigation ditch is ten cubic feet per second. Four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight gallons per minute. A flow rate about fifty percent higher than that needed to keep the Berkeley pit at its static water level. Mister Robert Manning, the Irish engineer and his equation. Revealed to me that the irrigation ditch would be about thirty-one inches wide and maybe eight inches deep at its center line. The methods given in Crane Technical Paper four-ten verify the dimensions. The stream width will thus be less than a quarter of Bell Creek, which was running at forty-four cubic feet per second on eleventh of May. In nineteen eighty-eight, MSC became an operating contractor of the super fund-based cooperative program between the EPA and the DOE. I was the manager of the first project executed under the program. The Resource Recovery Sub- Subprogram had the objective of finding ways to make valuable products from mining waste. MSC's pilot testing of Berkeley pit water helped develop the design for the horseshoe. Um, horseshoe bend plant, the water from the polishing plant is very, is a very valuable resource. Suretail flats should, or should be stripped mined to a, a layer below of the tailings. It should be backfilled with rock and limestone and covered with soil on which native plants and trees can grow. Irrigated by polishing plant water. Stagnant detention ponds should not be part of the areas remediation. We have enough pestilence and no need for more mosquitoes. And that was from Steve Kiava. The next one is from R. Edward Bandarob. Uh, twenty-six oh one Grand Avenue. S- reference section two communications to be read and acted upon. Number one, communication twenty twenty dash two-ten requesting the council of commissioners authorization to sign the consent decree. Most certainly sign the CD. It is pencils down, done deal. Take what we can get while the getting is good. Hire the out-of-town contractors to move the dirt. We have to meet the water quality standards to save the fish, to protect the environment. But please remember the scope of the CD does not even include what is needed to protect human health. It does not include long-term monitoring, testing for. And mitigation of hazardous to helmen, or human health airborne heavy metals. Originating from the residue of the historic mine waste deposits that will be left. From R. Edward Bandarob. The next one is from Barbara Gregovich, thirteen oh one West Porfree. Uh, hello Eric, I support the approval of the consent decree CD for the Butte Priority Soils operable unit. Also, I support the restore our creek ROCC project as well. I believe that the Silver Bow Creek can and should one day be restored as long as no new pumping would be required. And that a restored creek is compatible with the cleanup. I especially appreciated the information and clarifications they published in the Montana Standard on Sunday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty. And that was from Barbara Gregovich. And. Looks like that's the same one from Barbara. The next one is from Matt Vincent. Former Butte Silver Bow Chief Executive and Super Fund Negotiation Team Member. Um, hi, John Beller, my comments which closely follow my most recent restoring Butte column blog titled Butte CD. Setting the course for a new beginning found in the Butte Weekly. I want to thank you in advance for your consideration of my input and commend you for the work you've done, you've all done. Listening to our community on this crucial issue. A little more than three months have passed since the settling. Parties released, um, to the public for review its negotiated draft consent decree for Butte Priority Soils Super Fund Site. More than three decades in the making, the CD's detailed plans call for how Butte's urban super fund site will be cleaned up, taken care of. And paid for into the future. In an earlier installment of this column, I urge Butte citizens to attend meetings, pay attention, ask questions. And do their civic duty to earnestly try to learn about the plan and make comments to their elected officials. Remarkably, dozens and dozens of residents raise their voices about the cleanup, the majority of which are in favor of the plan. And really, what's not to like? The draft CD lays out a docket to, of work from Walkerville all the way to Timber Butte. And beyond that, expected to cost well over a hundred million to complete. Additionally, it spells out how the Atlantic Richfield Company, ARCO. Will pay for it and what assurances for success the plan will adhere to in, into the future. Plan goes above and beyond what is normally required under super fund law. And Butte is guaranteed to be healthier, greener, more vibrant because of it. In this installment, I am voicing my own opinion for the CD. To our commissioners so that they may vote to approve the chief executive Palmer to sign and send it forward. As many citizens have already suggested, including myself, the plan isn't perfect, nothing is. But it's very good and by that mean it's much better than good enough. One major criticism I've con- consistently heard about the plan is that it was negotiated in secret. And that the public wasn't allowed to take part. This is true from a legal sense, since a federal judge placed a confidentiality order o- over the CD negotiations. But from a practical sense, the state and federal agencies. And our local government challenged that order about as far as it could be challenged. Holding dozens of public meetings, forums and presentations over the years. All to inform the citizens and gather input, all of the bells and whistles into the plan. Like the Silver Bow Creek Conservation Corridor are directly a result of this substantial input. I specifically thank the public and the media for keeping the parties' feet to the fire. And for caring enough to show up at meetings and share ideas and concerns. I also specifically thank the hard-working super fund employees of Butte Silver Bow, the state of Montana and the EPA. As well as ARCO for staying the course and bringing this draft plan forward. Tirelessly and fearlessly, this process is as true as, as any in which you can't please everyone. And the ones you can't please are always the most challenging. And we definitely shouldn't forget to thank Governor Steve Bullock for one. Having the guts to stand up and do the right thing at the Parrot Tailings. I'm confident had he not gotten the trucks moving with that decision that we wouldn't have been where we are today. About darned ready to sign the, the CD. Secondly, we should thank the governor for committing to continue the conversation. On long-term restoration of the upper Silver Bow Creek watershed with his pledge of one million in that direction. Even though he will no longer be in office. And while money is, is this, is necessary, time, patience and persistence are the best resources the cra- creek has on its side. We might all pay closer attention. Silver Bow Creek took well over a hundred years for us to destroy. It's taken more than twenty years for us to breathe life back into and it's probably going to take at least that many more. Before we know what's needed to restore it to its fullest and most practical extent. I know it's, uh, it's a hotly contested and over-publicized topic, but I'm not quite. Sure, the fuss is necessary or even warranted at this point. Why so much urgency, even animosity by some? Over trying to determine the future right now, while the signing of the CD marks the end of one process. We shouldn't look at it at the end itself. In many ways, the CD sets the course for a new beginning. And how, and how do we know the best place for us to end up if we haven't yet, if we haven't yet to begin? Here's what I'm sure about in the draft CD. The more tailings and waste we remove as soon as possible. The more contaminated groundwater we proactively capture and treat. And the more funding we secure to do all of this now and into the future. The better our community's future will be, which also happens to be better for the entire watershed downstream of us. The removable, or removal of waste and tailings and the capture. And the treatment of the groundwater should be pretty self-explanatory. Get as much contamination out of the ground as possible. And if we know today that on some tomorrow, we'll need to replace or improve the groundwater collection system. Let's do it as soon as possible. The soonest possible is without question the best way to coordinate remedy. And restoration and maximize a severely limited funding available. Plus, there's no sense in building the beautiful conservation corridor envisioned for Silver Bow Creek only to disturb and tear it up as it's taking shape. My comments on the funding side may be warranted, or may warrant a bit more detail. At the very least, I'll dive into my thoughts more in depth in another column a little bit down the line. The amount of money settled upon the remediation and the restoration of Blacktail Creek. Purposely includes more than the project is, is expected to cost. In order to repay the funds from the sources that were spent on the removal of the Parrot Tailings. That money, all of it, in my opinion, needs to be allocated for proper, properly restoring Butte and our headwaters. Which is why it is so important we take the time and patience to ensure the money is spent in the most reasonable way. Further, it should be spent in an alignment with the community's highest priorities. If that turns out to be a lion creek, so be it. However, things have changed quite a lot in the past few years. I strongly contend that it's too early to conclude where any of that money should be spent. Until we better understand the under, the outstanding restoration needs. Um, on every creek in the upper basin that still has water in it. Lo- Lower Silver Bow Creek, Blacktail Creek, Basin Creek, Grove Creek, Browns Gulch and German Gulch. For instance, and for starters, the other part of the funding side. It is, it is not part of the CD and its final allocation agreement between Butte Silver Bow and ARCO. That will come in front of the council at some point in the foreseeable future. I won't talk about that in detail now, but will in an upcoming column. As always, please feel free to contact me via my email or phone. Five six five oh two three four, if you have any questions that we'd like to discuss further. Thanks again for your attention to this vital matter and applaud all of you for your efforts on behalf of your constituents. While it is truly one of, if not the most vital decisions you will make as a commissioner. And that we have to make as a community. Rest assured, it really isn't as difficult or dire as some have contended it to be. We must move forward one step at a time. The approval of the draft CD is the most important first step. And again, that was sincerely Matt Vincent. Mister Chief Executive, that concludes all of the input that, that I have to read into tonight's record.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Great job.
Thank you.
There's no more phone calls there now?
Uh, let me check. There is nothing there, Mister Chief Executive.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move into the consent agenda. Section one, A, committee reports one through four. B, communications, one through twenty-nine. Do we have any segregations or friendly amendments?
Looks like Commissioner Shaw, McDonough and Fisher do.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mister Chief Executive. At this time, I'd like to segregate, uh, item number twelve as twenty twenty dash two zero.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner McDonough?
Hey, Mister Chief Executive. I'd like to segregate number twenty-nine. Communication twenty twenty dash two twenty-two.
Thank you. Any others?
Uh, Commissioner Fisher does.
Commissioner who?
Uh, Fisher.
Oh, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Mister Chief Executive. I would like to segregate medication number six, twenty twenty dash one nine eight. And also number twenty-six, twenty twenty dash two one nine.
Six and twenty-six. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Are there any other segregations? Seeing none, Commissioner Morgan?
That was Commissioner Fisher, that was twenty twenty dash two one nine, right? Number twenty-six?
Number, number six, twenty twenty, one nine eight.
And number twenty-six?
Twenty twenty, two one nine.
Okay, thank you. Mister Chief Executive, at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, section one. A, the co- committee reports one through four. B, communications, one through twenty-nine. With the exclusion of number six, twenty twenty dash one ninety-eight. Number twelve, twenty twenty dash two zero four. Number twenty-six, twenty twenty dash two one nine. And number twenty-nine, twenty twenty dash two two two.
Second. Hey, we have a motion made in second and to approve the consent agenda, A, one through four. And B, one through twenty-nine, exclusive of number six, number twelve, number twenty-six, twenty-nine. Is there anything on the question? Everyone please vote. Anyone wishing to change their vote? The court, please record the vote.
Mister Chief Executive, it looks like it's twelve to zero. Twelve yays, zero nays.
Motion carries. First, we vote a communication number six. Which is twenty twenty dash one nine eight. Dave Schultz, twelve oh one West Copper, requesting council of commissioners to formalize their deliberation process. To assure that they are fully informed before in voters. Before voting on matters of significance. Presently, the council is subject to hearing the selective information the chief executive or his staff choose to debate. And this has led to uninformed decisions by the council on important issues. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mister Chief Executive. Um, as you know, Dave Schultz wrote this letter. It appears to be directed towards, uh, the chief executive Palmer. And maybe mostly the, uh, staff on the super fund. And I just what, thought it'd be a good idea if the chief executive or the super fund parties wanted to respond to that, um, letter. Thank you.
Um, I'll go first and then if, uh, Mister Sessa would like to add anything, but. You know, if, um, we give the information out and if any of the commissioners have any questions on any of the information or any of the communications. They are free to call at any time and ask questions. And dig in and get any more information they need, make an informed vote. Um, I think that's the process that the council has set out. It's worked for quite some time. And, uh, I think that we continue as it is. Mister Sessa, would you like to add anything?
Um, mi- m- Mister Chairman, um, mi- members of the. Com- Commission, I don't really, uh, I, I read this letter. I, I just thought it was another public comment. That came in. Uh, it's similar to the communication that Mister Schultz sent, uh, in previously. Uh, was, which was part of the public record. Uh, Mister Schultz, uh, was, uh, never in favor of the removal of the Parrot Tailings. Uh, and he expresses it again in this letter. And it somehow makes it seem like Butte Silver Bow and this council had anything to do. With, uh, being able to say yes or no to, to that decision. Uh, he did write this memo in twenty seventeen. There was nothing I could do with that memo relative to. Uh, the fact that the, uh, decision to move the Parrot Tailings and move the county shops was, uh. Was, uh, already made. Uh, and, uh, we, we thought that was the catalyst to, uh, getting, uh, the progress we've done made on the consent decree. Uh, Mister Schultz is entitled to his opinion. I think we have had an extraordinary public process. Uh, to explain the consent decree, uh, to the public and to you as a commission. I think you guys have gone to extraordinary lengths to try to understand the consent decree. Um, so I, I'm not sure, uh, what else I can say, but, uh. Uh, the, the fact is the Parrot Tailings are gonna be removed. Uh, uh, the shops are gonna be moved and rebuilt. And, uh, we, we, uh, are gonna have a great facility on Beef Trail Road. And, um, at the end of the day, this consent decree is outlining several projects that I think are in Butte's best interest, so. I, I don't have anything else to add.
Commissioner Fisher, would you like to add anything or?
Uh, no, thank you for the input, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, uh, Mister Sessa for your input. I just thought it was fair to have you respond to, uh, what Mister Schultz had said, um. I think, you know, the thirty million dollar, um, mark in there was something that probably was of interest to people. I think money is a factor. And, um, I just think that it was great to have you respond, so. At this time, I'd make a motion to note and place on file, communication twenty twenty dash one nine eight.
Second.
I have a motion made in second and to, uh, note and place on file, communication number twenty twenty dash one nine eight. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? The court, please record the vote.
Mister Chief Executive, it looks like we have twelve yays, zero. Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have twelve yea, zero nay.
Oh, yea, zero nay. Motion carries. Next, we'll go to communication number twelve, communication twenty twenty dash two zero four. We're preparing Public Works Director requesting Council of Commissioners to authorize the chief executive to sign the Marie- the Greed Corporation Agreement for Solid Waste Collection Services. This contract will allow Magree tracking to continue solid waste collection services for Butte Silver Bow. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Chief Executive. So, if everyone read the paper this morning, this was brought up, and some of the details were there. Uh, the first contract with, uh, Magrees, when they gave us the cans and they changed their services drastically, really, uh, was a great service, and I, I have nothing against that. But I thought that, that was five years ago, so there were a lot of things that kind of went into the mix when that, uh, first agreement was, uh, so I just thought that clear up some of those possible questions I asked, and that if she would please do that, and she also gave us an attachment to a, um, to an email that spells everything out. So, thank you.
Mrs. Gleason, would you like to respond?
Sure. Um, thank you, uh, Chief Executive Palmer and Commissioner Shaw for the records. And that Gleason, the Finance and Budget Director for Butte Silver Bow. Um, I did send out to you earlier this evening a spreadsheet that was kind of describing the change in the contract amount, as well as what the current rates are for Butte Silver Bow. So, if you look at the contract, it overall is just a five percent increase. Um, that increase is for a five-year period. There's no inflation factors within that contract. The contract amount goes from a hundred and six thousand two hundred dollars approximately, um, per month to a hundred and eleven thousand five thirty-two. Um, the difference per residential, um, on an annual basis for a residential unit goes from one oh one forty-one to one oh six fifty. Um, again, a five percent increase in the contract amount. I think some of the confusion, um, after talking to a few of the commissioners today in regards to this was that the rates that we're charging. So, if you recall, uh, five years ago, when we issued an RFP, it was actually, I think, um, the contract was let in November of two thousand fifteen. Um, at that point in time, we had also been looking at rate increases in our Water Utility Division, as well as Metro Sewer. And so, when this contract came before us and we were looking at it, um, at that point in time, we had sufficient reserve funds within the, um, landfill itself. So, it, we, even though the contract amount raised to one oh one point four one, um, per unit, we did not move our assessment rate. So, our re- reset assessment rate stayed at the ninety-three dollars, um, per unit. And, um, that's what it is today. But as we move forward into this new contract, we need to move up into, um, the actual amount per unit to the one oh six fifty so that, um, we will be bringing for you through the budget process and through the public hearing process, um, the potential change in those rates, um, moving to the one oh six fifty to fully cover this contract. Um, the monthly increase per residential unit is a dollar, um, thirteen, um, per month. So, not a significant change if we consider that it's actually a five-year period for those increase, and it stays flat over that five-year period of time. Just wanted to share a little bit of information. So, uh, personally, my residence is not within the, um, district, the, uh, current district. So, on a monthly basis, today, I pay directly to Magrees for their pickup and their service, which is still great service. I still think it's a great service, but I pay twenty-eight dollars a month, and annually, that totals three hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, I pay significantly more being outside of the district, and hopefully someday, um, the district will reach out to my area. Um, this is nothing against Magrees. Magrees, the difference is me being outside the district is Magree himself now has to handle, own the great company, has to handle, um, the monthly invoicing to me, as well as the monthly collections. And then out there, there's probably about fifty percent of those residents in my area, um, take the service. So, he has to make up the difference for the fuel and transport for that area. But, um, just to get back to this contract, I think it's a great contract. It's a great service for the community. And again, if you just look in the comparison and the amount that I paid versus being outside the district and what people pay um, within the district, it's a great service for the community.
Thank you, Dinette. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Exec- Executive. Thank you, Dinette. And, uh, the other thing I had asked you to gain touch on that was, uh, anytime there's an increase in an assessment on the taxes, there is a public hearing process. It goes through the budgetary process, so. But this contract will be effective on the first of July. Of course, we don't always have our budget done by the first of July. So, there will be, but the, the actual contract will be approved, and then we will go on to the assessment portion of it. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Shaw, that is correct. Um, we'll go through the normal process of the public hearing. Even if we do not raise rates in the Metro Sewer or within the landfill department, those, both of those enterprise funds require that we hold a public hearing process. Um, and so that will be the similar case here. We'll go through that public hearing process, just as we do annually every, every fiscal year. And then this time, I will be making a recommendation to fully cover the cost of the contract. Um, I think it's important to point out that those reserve funds, um, have now been exhausted by using, um, some of these funds. But just the current rate structure that we have in place at the landfill, um, is very beneficial. Um, on the agenda tonight, you're approving a contract for the cell four expansion. In a normal situation, that expansion alone is, um, close to three million dollars, um, a lot of significant savings, um, there in place just as a result of the competitive contracts that were let and that you were, will be awarded. Um, but in a normal situation, with a cell expansion, we potentially looking at a bond issue that would require additional rate increase. And right now, the stability of the fund is not requiring that. But moving forward, in order to continue to do that and continue to have, um, a very good landfill and being able to allow these expansions and meeting our obligations for closure costs, um, we need to cover the cost of the, of this piece of the contract.
Thanks, Dinette. Commissioner Shaw, or any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
Commissioner Anderson is still on mute.
You're on mute, Bill.
Better. Thank you. One of the things I wanted to point out real quickly, when this contract went into effect five years ago, uh, at that timeframe, there was a lot of discussion about switching over to these new garbage cans. And they said that there would be some discussion at this point in time on that. I imagine that is probably a formality, especially with the way, uh, business is being done with COVID. But I'd just like to point that out, that there is quite a few unhappy people with that. I've received many numerous complaints over the past few years, uh, driving up and down the alleyways and just, uh, the, this current system, I know it's working in some areas probably fine. I know in a lot of my areas, a lot of my constituents, a lot of people are having a lot of problem with it still, so. Uh, I wish there was something we could do on this, uh, go through the contract, try to find some way to get this to be working a little bit better for some of these folks. I've tried to help them a little bit. I've practiced that about it. Uh, uh, they've had a great help getting all the community enrichment on some of these issues, but there's still very many out there, so I'm not sure what the solution is. But, uh, there's some alleyways where the cans are just so congested with every apartment in the twelve plaques. Having their own can is just kind of unfeasible in some of these things. And, uh, something should be looked at into that. And with that, I will be probably voting on this. Thank you.
And we'll continue to look at different options, but, uh, right now, this is the most inexpensive way. If we had to go back to the old way where it was more manual labor, instead of the automated system they use for picking up the cans now, the contract increase would be much greater this year. And I think we're very lucky to keep it at where it is, with a minimal increase over the, the next five years. But if you've come up with any suggestions on how we can work through the complexes in your neighborhood, or, just feel free to call, and we'll have a discussion with Magrees and the rest of the staff here and see if we can make improvements.
Chief Executive Palmer, if I could just add to that, um, we also have Public Works Director Mark Neri on the call. And I also have the SID, um, analyst in my department now, Tim Cassidy. So, if anybody had any questions or comments or complaints that they're, um, taking, they could all, they could call my department, or as well as I know, they could call the Public Works Department. Um, community enrichment does help us a lot. Um, we reach out to them when we need assistance too, but there's other departments and areas that can help as well.
Any further questions? Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I would like to move to concur with communication twenty twenty dash two zero four and place it on file.
Second.
We have a motion made in second and to concur in the request in communication twenty twenty dash two oh four and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk record the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. It looks like we have eleven yea and one nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to communication number twenty-six, twenty twenty dash one nine. Kristen Rosa, Tiffett Administrator, requesting Council of Commissioners to authorize the chief executive to sign an option to purchase agreement with the Ryden LLC. The option to purchase agreement for, is for a one hundred and sixty-acre parcel in Montana connection located north of RAC Silicon. The proposed use of the property is for energy development. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Reason for segregating this communication is, um, I just had a few questions. Uh, I believe the last property we sold out in that area was two thousand dollars an acre. And I see this is for fifteen hundred dollars an acre. And it looks like we're only getting five thousand dollars down and then, uh, nothing for another forty-eight months. I would just maybe like a little bit of explanation because the difference between fifteen hundred and two thousand acre equals about eighty thousand dollars on that property. And then having a forty-eight month extension seems like a long time to me, but maybe I don't know. Kristen, if you could, please.
Commissioner Fisher, Kristen Rosa is here, and she's going to answer your question.
So, we did negotiate that price with the, uh, potential buyer. And, um, the five thousand dollar option that they pay every year, they'll pay that every year. Um, the fifteen hundred dollars was negotiated down from the two thousand. Two thousand, we normally sell the property for is, uh, because it has access to better infrastructure. This parcel is not directly off of Rick Jones Way. It doesn't have access to our industrial water directly. All of that infrastructure is gonna have to be brought into that parcel. So, we did negotiate that fifteen hundred dollar price.
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, if I could?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive. Thank you, Kristen. I appreciate your input. Um, I guess I, I, I just, I know that the board approves this and you, but, um, I can understand negotiating down from two thousand to fifteen hundred per acre because of the accessibility of, uh, utilities and things like that. But do we ever have anyone besides the board, uh, the Tiffett Board? Do you have anyone have any input to this that isn't, um, you know, it just seems to me like five thousand dollars per year is a, is a little amount of money on a two hundred and forty thousand dollar contract. Does that seem like it's a, a good amount? I mean, I'm not questioning you on your, I'm just wondering what the board, I see it was unanimously voted. How was it discussed at the meeting, if you could tell me a little bit?
So, the price was discussed at the meeting, um, and we did start at two thousand dollars an acre, which is what we sell all of our property for. Um, as you know, we have a few things that we're trying to do out there. We're trying to diversify our economy, um, create jobs and, uh, uh, do value added is kind of what we're tasked to do through tax increment in Montana. Um, but that parcel, so what we negotiated on that parcel is that they have to buy the entire hundred and sixty acre parcel. They don't, they were willing to pay our two thousand dollars an acre, but they wanted to subdivide it and take some of this, uh, ravine that's through that parcel. Um, and we negotiated that we would take the fifteen hundred dollars as long as they took the entire parcel. Um, this is a first step in what we hope to be a bigger project also, so, um, we, uh, we think it's an exciting project, and we definitely think it's worth what we've negotiated.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. One more follow-up, if I could, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, Kristen. I guess the part I was looking at, you know more about it than I do, I'm sure, and you know the property. It just seemed to type one hundred and sixty acres for five thousand dollars a year. Unless this property was not that marketable, um, seemed to be, you know, there wasn't much earnest money on one hundred and sixty acres. I guess the board must have felt it was a good deal, and you did. So, I, I accept your answer, and thank you for that.
Thanks.
Commissioner Fisher, would you like to make a motion? Are there any other questions first, I guess?
If there are no other questions, Chief Executive Palmer, I would make a motion to concur and place on file communication, um, twenty dash two nineteen, twenty twenty dash two nineteen. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion made in second as to concur in the request in communication twenty twenty dash two nineteen and place the communication on file. Is there anything else on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Who is not?
Are we missing one vote?
Ye- yes, Mr. Chief Executive. Who, who is it? Uh, Commissioner Anderson, we don't have your vote recorded.
Is that a yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Chief-
Twelve, zero.
Yep.
Motion carries. The, uh, next communication was mission number twenty-nine. Communication twenty twenty dash two two two. Dinette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council of Commissioners and the chief executive to review the finance, budget expenditure approval list for the week of May thirteenth, twenty twenty, in the amount of one billion six hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents for the week of May twentieth, twenty twenty, which will be available after six P M. on Tuesday, May nineteenth. Who was it that?
Commissioner McDonough.
Commissioner McDonough. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Uh, we just segregated to make the friendly amendment to include the amount of the check on for this week, May twentieth, in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, four hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
So, we have a motion made in second and to concur and place on file communication twenty twenty dash two 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 as amended with adding a four hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents to this, uh, communication. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner An- uh, Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Brendan, would you just amend your motion to authorize me to sign the expenditure list?
Yes, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to amend my motion to allow Chairman Morgan to sign the, uh, expenditure list.
Second.
Motion has been, uh, made in second and to amend the motion as before with allowing Commissioner Morgan to sign the expenditure list. Anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote? Twelve, zero. Motion carries. Next, we'll go into section two, communications to be read and acted upon. Communication number twenty twenty dash two one zero. Dave Palmer, chief executive, respectively, ask requests the council of commissioners authorization to sign the consent decree for the Butte priorities- Priorities Soil Operable Unit. Can I call on Superfund Coordinator John Sesso to give a brief overview of this communication?
Mr. Chief Executive, uh, members of the council, uh, I think the operative word is brief. Uh, the, the time has come, I think, uh, to take a vote and, and authorize the Chief Executive to sign the consent decree. Uh, I will just repeat that is, it is the staff recommendation, uh, having worked on this, uh, diligently, uh, for the last couple of years, of course, uh, since we had an agreement in principle, and uh, for the many years before that, uh, we are, we are very pleased to be able to make this recommendation to you. We believe that the consent decree addresses, uh, all of the deficiencies that were brought forward in 2006, when the first record of decision for our site was released, uh, after 14 years of really working the site, and uh, a lot of data being collected, a lot of verification that what worked and what didn't work, and a lot of science went into the, the negotiations to make sure that we addressed the deficiencies and uh, came up with a product that you all can be quite proud of, and I think, uh, bodes well for our community, uh, moving into the future. Uh, there have been, it's a sort of an extraordinary situation here with this virus. Uh, I didn't think that we would have as really a robust public information and education process that we ended up having. Uh, the um, the, the pub, the information and, and presentations we made in February, uh, in early March, uh, were a great first step. Those were designed, but then when we couldn't get together and people were kind of compelled to write their thoughts down and pose their questions in writing, it gave us that much more opportunity to address, uh, what, 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 what the public was asking about and uh, and then dealing with, with those questions. Uh, and we've provided you with a, a, a lot of information over the last two months. Uh, you have, of course, gotten a mountain of, of public input, which I think really has been remarkable and has been great for the process. But at the end of the day here, we're uh, we're as confident today as we were on February 13th, when the CD was released for public review. I will just make uh, one comment, uh, and, and then I think we should just kick it to questions and, and get on with the uh, get on with the vote, and that is, uh, that this product, uh, that's in front of you, that the chief, uh, should sign, uh, is a product of this community's, uh, due diligence. Staff has worked their butts off to make sure it represented everybody's input to the extent possible, but, but really, we have a very informed community. We have a very active community. We've all been at it for 30 years, not just those of us in the local government, not just you as commissioners, your predecessors, uh, but your successors as well. Uh, but everybody in this community has, has lived with the environmental cleanup. A tremendous amount of progress has been made to date over these 30 years, uh, and this, and this document, this consent decree lays forth the, most particularly, the financial assurance to make sure that the rest of the job gets done and done right in terms of, of water quality in this community, and uh, uh, to make sure we put the resource, the natural resources and human health, which uh, which, which is an important part of this decision as well, are protected. And we have gone through a, a lot together and through great lengths to make sure that our taxpayers are not left on the hook now or in the future, uh, for the costs associated with Superfund. We achieved that goal, and, and, and finally, with, with respect to the endland uses, uh, we have made it our business over these 30 years to make sure Butte gets some good land uses, whether it's Copper Mountain, or, or Foreman's Park, or what we've got going at the original, or the NRD investments on Big, uh, Skyline Park, uh, the list goes on, and uh, we are excited about the Silver Bowl Creek Conservation Area. We believe it matches up extremely well with the vision of, of our community to make sure that corridor is all it can be, uh, and we've got a lot of work to do. Lastly, uh, we have an important milestone this evening, uh, get this to a judge, let him look at it, let the public comment again, but once we get through this process, we've got a lot of work ahead, and public comment will continue, and the vigilance that we've had and the diligence we've taken to make sure the Superfund treats Butte right will continue long into the future. We're set up well for the future, we've got the money, Arco's paying for everything, and I think it's time to, to go ahead and uh, let the chief sign this document and move it forward. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions from the council?
Looks like Commissioner Sorge has one. Chief Executive.
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You know, it's not really a question, I just want to make a, a, a brief comment. First off, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody that commented, and we did have a lot of comments, you know, we've had, I don't know, countless letters, and I think it's fabulous that we've, we've heard from so many people, you know, from all their different opinions, you know, so I, that's important. Um, I am going to be supporting the consent decree because I believe it's, I believe as a commissioner, we have listened to many sides of the debate, and that, you know, and I too have countless hours of away, you know, uh, away from my family, away from home, kind of being informed, uh, commissioner of the Superfund issues, so I, um, I am about no means an expert, but one thing I have learned, uh, to find out who the experts are in the big picture, you know, over the years, and I think a lot of those experts are some of our Butte Silver Bow staff, you know, they've got, they've been around for a long time. Uh, so I, I do believe they've, they've led us straight down, down the right path. You know, um, we have heard from a lot of the technical folks, you know, over the period of time, and scientific folks, you know, they're saying it's not perfect, uh, but it is a good deal. Um, heard in, you know, the, our map is going to be a, a great thing to the community, you know, we, we have been told that, you know, we've been shown the difference between, or trying to teach the difference between remediation and restoration, you know, uh, from some of the different scientific folks. Um, I want to applaud those that have stood up and voiced her, and took the courage to stand and voice her opinion. I also want to acknowledge the Restore Our Creek folks tonight. You know, they're a group of good people that's kept us focused and kept the, and kept the gears moving when everything seemed to be stalled. Um, I think they've, you know, they've, they've done a good job. Um, I understand air quality is not part of the consent decree, but during the cleanup, the air quality is going to be monitored very close, and the air quality will be part of the next Westside Soil Operating Unit, will be investigated. Um, I believe our voices were heard by the negotiating team. I accept not everyone sees this as a perfect deal or even a good one, but I trust we'll see great improvements in the environment that will enhance the elimination of the Superfund stigma. We need to move this forward. I believe we are all on the same team, that we want the best for our community. I pray Jesus we have all learned something from this to keep us from making the same mistakes that we had been made before. You know, and then just in closing, I just want to say, I have a quote from Abraham Lincoln, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." So, but I, again, I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge. Any more commissioners? Commissioner Shaw, did you have something?
I, I think, yeah, I, well, I do. Um, Michelle had her finger up, that's okay, where's Shaw? She would never. So, John-
I can see a couple people.
Commissioner Sorge, you couldn't have said it any, any better. I thank all the same people. Uh, in 2006, I started as a new commissioner, and that's the same year we had our original allocation agreement. It seems like eons ago, and it really was, 14 years ago, and I just feel honored and privileged to be a part of this decision-making process for the CD, and I also will resoundingly uh, say yay on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Shea, I, looks like you're on mute, or microphone's not working. Commissioner Shea, uh, we're probably going to have to have you log out of the meeting and then log back in to see if we can get you back into it. We'll, uh, we'll hold up until you get back, for sure. Mr. Chief Executive, if you can just hold on for a second.
We'll wait for her to log in again.
Mr. Chief Executive, while they're waiting, I can read through the consent decree, uh, starting on page one, uh, and, and get to page 157, uh, if anybody would click me to.
Could you do that? Put it, put your mic on mute when you do it, please?
Uh, one second.
Is your mic muted on your, on your laptop, Michelle?
Is there a calling number?
If you're working on the, the, uh, Commissioner laptop, if you press, uh, function, uh, F3, that will up, increase your volume. Well, that's on the speakers though, isn't it?
One second. We are troubleshooting by looking each other, at each other right now.
Commissioner Shea, could you, could you phone in?
Yes.
Commissioner Shea, do you have that phone number? I believe it's in that email that you used to join the meeting.
Am I on? Am I on? Am I on? Am I on?
Can you, can you mute your microphone?
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
Michelle, if you could, uh, mute your, uh, mute your microphone.
I'm muted. I'm muted.
Is that better?
Yeah, let's, yep.
Yeah, we can hear you now, Michelle.
Okay. And, and I don't know what's going on. It's not muted on my end on my computer. I'm, I'm pretty technically savvy, so thanks for being patient with me. Um, and I guess indulge me for a minute, I'll, I'll probably get a little emotional. Um, first of all, I want to thank the members of the public that, that took the time to, um, to voice their opinions. Their opinions are very important to all of us, and important to me, and important to all of you, I know. We're preparing to make the most monumental decision to ever affect the future of our great city. Contrary to what some have said, I promise you that the gravity and significance of this situation is not lost on me, any of my colleagues, or the citizens that we represent. We are all worthy of loving Butte and wanting to see it prosper. I'm not sure I can put into words the emotions I have felt throughout this process of learning about and forming opinions of Butte's cleanup. Our city and county consolidated in 1977, and three short years later, in 1980, our path was altered forever. I totally understand the mistrust felt by folks who have not forgotten the day the pumps were turned off. Since consolidation, Butte has never had the opportunity to function without being under stress. But Butte is a city that has learned to exist among the traumas of our past. Our scars are visible and show that our people are tougher than nails. I approached the consent decree with a great deal of skepticism and a little bit of a preconceived notion of what I was going to hear and how I was going to feel. At times, it has been difficult to separate the emotional from the technical, but doing so was necessary for an objective view of the issue. Throughout the many years this has dragged on, we have had access to technical experts and public servants from our federal, state, and local governments. Many of us, including members of the public who are listening tonight, attended most or all of the public education sessions to form the best understanding that we could. It was our duty. What I've learned is that things are never as good or as bad as people tell you. I'm grateful for the opportunities I've had to seek out and sift through information from multiple sources. I have weighed risk and reward to come to a balanced, educated decision, always considering the effect that my decision will have on Butte and its future. It was sometimes difficult to reconcile the fact that the very thing that created a thriving and successful community has also been slowly eroding our ability to grow and succeed in the future. It is my greatest honor to be able to represent the citizens of Butte throughout this process. I believe that the contents of this consent decree are what Butte needs in this moment to honor our past and protect and control our own future by providing a legally binding framework for a proper and compliant cleanup. I do not think it's perfect, nor does anyone. The very nature of negotiation is that everyone gets something and nobody gets everything. Our negotiating team fought hard to ensure that even though Butte Silver Bow is a potentially responsible party, the taxpayers of Butte Silver Bow will not bear the cost of this cleanup, the negotiated endland use amenities, nor the operations and maintenance costs required in the future. There are financial backups and assurances built into the document that further serve to protect the citizens' pocketbook. This vote tonight is the second to last step in the culmination of years and years of hard-fought battles made by and on behalf of the people of Butte. By taking a meaningful step tonight, we can begin to wrap up the cycle of constant uncertainty that Butte has lived with since 1980. The project will bring stability, create jobs, and open doors to the economic development and growth that Butte deserves, and which has been stymied due to the negative association with being a designated Superfund site. This consent decree is also necessary in order to ever provide a pass forward for the first mile of Silver Bow Creek. While it can't be done within the consent decree, I am hopeful that an MOU will be agreed upon between the parties. A tip of the hat goes to the people of Butte for their patience and resilience as the negotiating team and citizen groups such as Sea Tech, Sea Ledge, and ROCC educated us and advocated for a bright future on our path. We are at a crucial turning point where Butte's very existence is at stake. There are things our community needs, and this consent decree will provide some of them. Our public and private enterprises will continue to suffer if we allow this opportunity to slip between our fingers. Our citizens have made it clear they are ready for this body to allow the Chief Executive to sign the consent decree and to move forward to begin cleaning up our community. My children are the sixth generation of my family to live in Butte. No one wants to see another generation come and go before we start making meaningful progress. From our rough-and-tumble heydays until now, we have remained strong and resilient, proud of our past and where we came from, but always hopeful for what we have yet to achieve. Our cleanup, I believe, will be the next of many great achievements in store for Butte. A wise citizen once told me that good things will happen in Butte if we let them. I think of this statement often as I make decisions. It's our time to rise to the occasion, honor our past, and embrace our future by letting something good happen. Butte has waited long enough. It's time to move dirt and get this cleanup started, and for the reasons I stated. And for the reasons I stated, I will be supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Very well said. Are there any other comments or questions from the Commission? I can't see any pictures here, so...
Commissioner Fredrickson has one.
Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. You know, uh, as a fifth-generation person, fifth-generation Butte person, and, uh, someone that's, was born six days before the pumps turned off in 1982, I have not taken this decision lightly at all. Um, I also have two young children that'll be, that are sixth-generation Butte now. And, uh, in fact, it's my son Clark's birthday today. He is seven years old. Uh, so that's also, uh, on my mind. But, uh, you know, when I first started, Commissioner Fisher told me that I would know the right way to vote in my heart. And, uh, in my heart, I know that this is the right thing to do for Butte, so I will also be supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fredrickson, and happy birthday, Clark. Any other comments from Commissioners or questions?
Commissioner McDonough has his hand up.
Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd just like to take this short opportunity to thank, uh, the citizens of Butte Silver Bow for their input. Uh, I think it's been very important in the process, uh, over the last eight years for, for my personal experience on the Commission, uh, and all of the superfund meetings that we've all been able to sit through. Uh, I think that the public input has been very important to the process. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank all of the employees of Butte Silver Bow and all of the departments, including yours, Chief Executive Palmer, and the superfund department, um, and all of your efforts in moving this consent decree forward. And, uh, there's been several administrations and many Commissioners and many employees on behalf of Butte Silver Bow that have fought hard and, and did their due diligence to, to move this forward, and I appreciate all of that. You know, I'd like to thank the technical experts that I was able to reach out to, uh, not only locally in, in the government, but also our outside technical experts, folks that live in our community that are deeply concerned about moving our cleanup forward as well, and I'd like to thank them as well. And finally, I'd like to thank my fellow Commissioners. You know, it's been an honor for the last eight years. There's been lots of meetings with lots of information, and at times, it's been really tough to digest all of it, but, you know, I feel that we've all done a, a good job together, and I think that we've kept the, the ship, um, in, moving in the right direction. And I'd like to think of this as the next step in the process. You know, it's been, uh, stated that it's the, the most monumental decision that we'll make in the history of Butte Silver Bow. Uh, I don't tend to agree with that. I think the, the decision that we're gonna make here tonight is just the next step in the process. You know, superfund is not a destination, per se. It's been a, a journey, and I think that we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us, obviously. I'd like to see many more decisions, um, of this magnitude and significance come before us, uh, for many years to come as, uh, as a community in Butte Silver Bow. So, I'm comfortable with where I'm at. I'd like to thank everybody, uh, on behalf of myself, for all of the information and guidance you've, uh, provided, and I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonough. Any other Commissioners have comments or questions?
Commissioner Olson has one.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer and, um, Chairman Morgan. I'd like to, I'd, I'd also like to thank all the public that participated actively in this, attending all the education sessions and submitting their comments and talking to each one of the, us Commissioners about, um, the project before us. Um, I think we also need to put a, a, a thank you out to the EPA, uh, State of Montana, and our COBP. Um, they've put a lot of time into this also. And also our superfund department and others, uh, other employees of Butte Silver Bow that have worked on this for thirty-some-odd years. Um, wouldn't be here without you. Um, I also want to thank Rock. Uh, I think their vision is, uh, one of the reasons that we have the amenities that are going to go into this CD, and that's really where that came from. Um, and we'll worry about the Craig when we get the, the cleanup almost completed, and let's get on with it at that point. But their vision, uh, is really what, uh, amounted to the amenities that we see in this CD, which is pretty important. Um, as others said, uh, this is a, a small step, uh, this milestone, uh, that's going to end up to be a, a long process. There's many more decisions to be made along the way. Uh, there's more public input. It's not signed, sealed, and delivered that everything is gonna go perfectly. Uh, there's still a lot of work, both, uh, on the ground and in the, the offices and departments, uh, to get this, this done. Uh, this is a historical decision we're making tonight. I think we all want to make the correct decision. I want to, I want to be on the right side of hi, of this historical decision, and I believe that a yes is a good decision tonight, and it will be a good one in, as the history, uh, looks back on our decisions. So, thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Any other Commissioners, questions, or statements?
Doesn't look like there's any, Mr. Chief Executive.
Anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I, uh, I also just want to thank everybody in general for the comments and, and everything that we've received. I'd like to thank our technical staff here at, at Butte Silver Bow for allowing us kind of the opportunity of receiving the, the messages and the phone calls and, and everything. It, it really did work out pretty well, I, I think, for everybody. So, um, ROC-C, yeah, thank you as well. Um, even though you may not have got exactly what you wanted, you, you did help the process wholeheartedly, and, and, and I appreciate that, so. At this time, Mr. Chief Executive, I would make a motion that we concur with Communication 2020-210, um, and place the communication on file. I would also ask that, since it is a monumentous, um, vote, I, I would ask that we individually express our votes, just to make sure that the record reflects exactly how, how we as Commissioners voted. So, that's, that's my motion.
Second. Do we have a motion made in second? The request in Communication 2020-210 and place the communication on file. Uh, this has been asked to be a roll-call vote, so if the clerk, maybe I could just go through the names, or maybe the clerk could go through the names and ask how we vote, or, John, do you want to, uh, read?
Um, sure, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll just go through, uh...
Is everyone to mark the chart?
Oh, I'll just, uh, read the list as they are. Uh, District 1, Sean Fredrickson. If you could please state your, your vote.
Yay.
Okay. District number 2, Michelle Shea. Please state your vote. If she has a... She is a yay. District 3, Chairman John Morgan. I would vote yay. District 4, John Sorich.
Yes.
District 5, Dan Olson.
Yes.
District 6, Jim Fisher.
I also would like to thank everyone, and I'm voting a symbolic no. Thank you.
Thank you. District 7, Josh O'Neill.
Yay.
Uh, District 8, Brendan McDonough.
Yay.
District 9, Eric Mankins.
Yes.
District 10, Bill Anderson.
No.
Thank you. District 11, Vice Chair Cindy Shaw.
I vote yay.
Thank you. And District 12, Dan Callahan.
That's a double yay.
Thank you. Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have 10 yay and 2 nays.
A motion carries with 10 yay and 2 nay, and before we leave this subject, I would like to thank, uh, Chairman Morgan for reading all the communications and probably want to thank the COVID-19, because otherwise, I would have been up there reading them. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
My pleasure, Mr. Chief Executive.
And next, we'll move on to, uh, Section 3, Ordinances and Resolutions for Introduction. Council Bill Number 2020-03, Ordinance 2020-03. Council Bill Number 2020-04, Ordinance 2020-04. Next, Section 4, Ordinances and Resolution, Suspension of the Rules for Final Passage. Commissioner Morgan, would you like to, uh, there's two resolutions, 2020-21 and 2020-22. Would you like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Resolution 2020-21 and 2020-22 by waiving subsection 7 of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to suspend the rules for the advanced passage, uh, of Council Resolution 2020-21 and 2020-22 without reference to Judiciary Committee. Is there, uh, anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
One second, Mr. Chief Executive. Looks like we're looking for Commissioner Mankins and... Commissioner Anderson.
Yes, it's by me. It will not let me vote.
Okay, what is your vote, Commissioner Mankins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Looks like, Mr. Chief Executive, we have 12 yay and 0 nay.
Okay, motion carries for the suspension of the rules. Next, we'll go to Resolution 2020-21. Will the clerk please read the title?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Resolution 2020-21 is a resolution amending the budget fiscal year 2019-2020 in accordance with Section 7-6-4032, Montana Code Annotated MCA, providing for an emergency budget appropriation, appropriating unanticipated revenue to the Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding to be appropriated for expenditures related to local law enforcement deposit, or department and detention center, and providing for an effective date herein. Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, I make a motion that we place Council Resolution 2020-21 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to place pass Council Resolution 2020-21 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
One second. Can you just please make sure you play, or you hit the submit button, Commissioners? Looks like we're just missing one, Mr. Chief Executive, from Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner O'Neill, could you please tell us what your vote would be? Commissioner O'Neill? Uh, Commissioner O'Neill, are you muted?
Must've done some bedtime.
It might be.
Commissioner Morgan, it looks like he has a, a, a little warning time. Maybe he's lost connection.
Okay.
Low bandwidth.
Yep.
Commissioner O'Neill? Looks...
Commissioner O'Neill is frozen. We will not let him, um, vote. Chairman Morgan?
Thank you, Commissioner Mankins.
And he, do you have a picture of him?
No.
No. I do vote yes. He says he votes yes. He can hear, but he cannot.
Okay.
So, he votes yes.
Commit, looks like we have 12 yay, 0 nay.
A motion carries. We'll go to the Council Resolution 2020-22. Clerk, please read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Resolution Number 2020-22 is a resolution directing the Butte Silver Bow Land Records Department to mail notice of pending tax deed issuance to all persons considered interested parties for each property for which there has been issued a tax certificate in accordance with the provisions of Section 15-18-212, MCA, further directing the Treasurer to issue a tax deed for those parcels of property where there has been issued a tax certificate and the expiration date of the redemption period has expired, and the required payments have not been made, and providing for an effective date herein. Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, I move to place Council Resol, Resolution 2020-22 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 2020-22 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
We must have one missing. Uh, Commissioner O'Neill, can, can you hear us again and tell us how you would vote?
Yes.
He voted yes, so, Mr. Chief Executive...
He's voting yes, Chairman Morgan.
12 yay, 0 nay.
Motion carries. Next, we go to public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. We'll go to the phones, John.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, we don't show anybody on the phone line. If we can just wait a couple seconds, just to make sure that there's no delay. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We have nobody on the phone line, nor do I have any more comments to read at tonight's meeting.
Hey, thank you. So, there will be a committee of the whole meeting next week, and, um, it's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to adjourn. Anything on the question? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
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 Welcome back, Josh.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks for everything. Thanks for, good night, everybody.
Weekend. We have a good weekend, everyone.
Too. Good night, everyone.